Let's go ahead and call a meeting to order, please. This is October the first, 2015, our regular work session of the Canton City Council. If you would, please, we have a special guest who will be leading our pledge tonight, Josh Cataron. Does that sound, does that close? Okay. And he will also be receiving a plaque following that. And so if you would, please, stand and we'll ask Josh to come to the microphone over here and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Goodman?
May we bow. Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for all that are here. Such a good crowd on such a rainy night. We ask that you be with us here in the city and help us to make plans for the future. Help us to take care of the business that we need to at hand tonight. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
Hopefully, can you hear? Can both of you hear this? Okay. I'm going to read this proclamation and then present it to Josh. It's red ribbon week. Whereas communities across America have been plagued by the numerous problems associated with illicit drug use and those that traffic in them. And whereas there is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, couples with the hard work and determination of organizations such as the Young Marine of the Marine Corps League to foster a healthy, drug-free lifestyle. And whereas governments and community leaders know that citizen support is one of the most effective tools in the effort to reduce the use of illicit drugs in our communities. And whereas the red ribbon has been chosen as a symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarena, a Drug Enforcement Administration agent who was murdered in the line of duty, and represents the belief that one can make a difference. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention and reduction efforts. And whereas October twenty-third through thirty-first has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now therefore, I, Gene Hobgood, Mayor of the City of Canton, to hereby proclaim October twenty-third through the thirty-first as Red Ribbon Week in Canton, and urge all citizens to join me in this special observance. Okay. Certainly want to welcome everyone here tonight. I will now entertain a motion or consideration to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any changes or anything? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, in your agenda package, you also have the minutes from the September the seventeenth, 2015, meeting. Are there any changes, corrections, or deletions to be made to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Minutes have been approved. Also in your agenda package is the financial statements for August 2015. Are there any questions or concerns? Or we have the CFO here and the city manager that can answer them if there's anything you need answered. This is in the agenda package for informational purposes only, so we will move on to the next item. Which is our ten-minute public input period, and we have a couple people signed up for that. Pat Gold.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Pat Gold, and I'm here tonight representing Canton's Main Street Program. As most of you know, the Canton Main Street Program presents our First Friday Concert and Block Party each month, and we have always had a rain or shine policy. This month, however, we have decided to reschedule First Friday after consulting with numerous weather outlets and out of an abundance of caution concerning the forecast for tomorrow and tomorrow evening in particular. While First Friday is a Main Street event, there are many vendors, other program participants, and our sponsors who depend on a great evening of fun that brings our citizens and visitors to our downtown. The chance of a successful evening tomorrow evening was looking quite dim, and the fact that we are also hosting Main Street's Inferno Chili Cook-Off on October tenth led to our decision to reschedule. Everyone who was scheduled to participate tomorrow evening in First Friday will be invited to join us at Main Street's Inferno Chili Cook-Off. We are also glad to report that our band, Black Wolf Moon, will also be with us on October tenth. This gives us the chance to wrap these two events into one and make it bigger and even better. Some adjustment to the scheduled times is anticipated, and those details will follow in the next few days. In the meantime, we appreciate everybody's effort to help us get the word out about tomorrow evening. We're sorry to have to reschedule it, but we felt like there was just no other way this month, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Lois Howard?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the privilege of being here.
If you would, please, if you would, excuse me, try to get as close to that as you can. I know that thing doesn't want to stand up like it should, but I want to hear what you have to say. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the privilege of being here. I'm going to discuss with you, and I know we only have ten minutes, so I'll hurry this along. I'm going to discuss that I've lived here in Canton since 2002, and I really appreciate everything. I went down to Mirada a couple of weeks ago to have dinner, and I thought, my goodness, Canton is even prettier than this, you know, eating at the places we have here, so, and the park and all the things, and the YMCA. It's just like living sort of in a big city, but yet the small-town kindness and goodness that you have. So I felt very safe here. I do research, do a lot of research for the veterans, and I'm an advance guard for the Wounded Warrior Project. And so I was going out August eighth. I'd like to break up a little incident and hold your hand up when I run out of time. That is where the women are. So I went out to Publix. It was about fifteen minutes till ten. It was getting close to closing time, and I had to do some research on the Eighty-second Airborne, as I plan to go to Columbus, you know, down there to their museum, you know, across Fort Benning, and do probably a project for them. So as I rushed in the store, I did not take my purse. I just stuck some money in my jogging outfit. And I found out later, after the incident happened from a GBI agent, the worst thing I could have done was go without my cellphone because someone came right in after me, a black guy, and he started stalking me, sniffing me, touching me, and I went, I went to the red man, that's all the people I saw, I'm sorry, that's all the people that I saw there, because almost everyone was gone. We had, of course, a cashier. So I went up to her and I told her there was a man bothering me and following me through the store. So she called the manager, and he said he's out back and was unloading the fish. So she said, well, we'll need to see someone in customer service. However, we could not, for some reason, find anyone there. So I rushed about, getting my salads, getting some ice cream, or we could have something to eat while we did the research on the military channel. We wanted to get back by ten because I had a big thing about the Eighty-second Airborne. I thought it would be a help to me. So Mr. Gathman and I went there. He stayed in the car. We parked in a handicap spot. As I come out of the store, well, when we got there, I paid for my items, which were few. I went to hurry and get out, and the black man had nothing in his hand, and the cashier said, we're about to close, and do you want anything, sir? And he reached over and got a bag of popcorn, and he said, yes. So he came right on after me, and I heard him, he had one of the phones that you hold like this. I heard him say, she's coming out of the store. Well, I thought that I was going to be kidnapped. I was very frightened. I rushed to my car, not realizing that there was someone blowing frantically at me. I found that out later, as he was one of my witnesses. And then one guy came over. He banged on my window after we were hit at about forty miles an hour. Mr. Gathman here has had to have brain damage. I had herniated disc, which I thank God healed. I got a wonderful letter from my orthopedic specialist, and he said that it's wonderful. It's a miracle, really, how I'm healed. So for the last year, that happened eight, four, eight-five-fourteen, I did not get any, the officer that came there was Officer Michael Sweat. He did not come over to me till after he talked with the people in SUV that hit me. And here's what happened before he got there. The girl that hit me, she came around on Mr. Gathman's side. My windows are dark. She grabbed my purse, and he struggled and got it away from her, and she said, I'm leaving. And Mr. Gathman said, don't run over me. I will be getting your tag number. So the medic that was there, he said, I'm a medic, and he said, you seem to have, the way you're doing, he said, like maybe you have herniated disc from that hit. And he said, I want to tell you, ma'am, I was right in behind you, and that was done purposely and deliberately. And of course, with her grabbing my pocketbook, Mr. Gathman, and she said to him, I don't, I didn't know anyone else was in here. He said, I can see that you didn't. And he said, she said, I'm leaving. He said, don't run over me. I'll be getting your tag. So the medic and I went over. We called nine-one-one, and I told her if she left, she would be arrested, is what the nine-one-one operator told me. And so I went back to my car and stood by my car, and the medic stood there with me, and Mr. Gathman stayed in the car. He got out when the officer came, and he went over to the SUV and talked to Ms. Denise Conway, who hit me, and the guy. I was very surprised when I saw him jump in the car with her. I said, you, you were the one that was in there stalking me, touching me, smelling my perfume, rubbing my hair. He said, I can do all those things. I didn't hurt you. I didn't pinch you. I did not cause any pain for you. And the medic said, yes, you did. That is stalking. And he's, and you caused her a lot of pain. He started laughing at me. He laughed in my face. So about that time, the medic said, you could step out, sir. And I appreciate that he was there to take up for me. And the officer Sweat came, and he told me I could go back to my car. And I went back to my PT Cruiser and waited to go to the hospital. And so he asked her, I later found out by, I didn't know what was being said, of course, but we got the, I hired Hal Johns, which is a wonderful man. He's a private investigator, works a lot for Billy Hastings then. And so he got the tapes from the police for us of things that were said, like the officer, you can hear everything that's been said. And she said, that lady said she's going to sue me. And she had called her mother and her boyfriend, and they got there immediately, and the, her gentleman, her mother's boyfriend, called me a very bad word. And Officer Sweat, that time, did take up for me. He said, well, she wasn't at fault. She was in her car, and she's hurt, and she's going to the hospital. I'm going to rule this an accident, and I want you all to leave right now. And so when he came over to me, he said, do you want me to call Amos? I said, my car's still drivable, and Mr. Gathman's going to take me to the hospital. The medic said I would be far better going that and being moved around a lot. And he told me to hold my hand to my neck here and just go, and he buckled me in, the officer. So I said to him, I said, well, I want to wait around to see if you're going to arrest them. I said, they had open bottles of beer in the car. The girl does not have a driver's license. She was parked over in a shoe store with her lights on, according to the witnesses. And she slammed into my car so hard that Mr. Gathman had a pint of blood taken out of his brain. I had herniated disc in my lumbar spine. I had cracked ribs. We were hurt pretty badly. And so I started to fall because when you have a herniated disc, the orthopedic surgeon explained to me when that disc slipped out, then I had no feeling in my right leg. I was very grateful for a young man that worked for Publix. His name is Stephen, I forget his last name right at the moment. I have it written down, but I don't think I have time to go through that. So he grabbed me and held me up, and of course, I wrote him a thank you note with a dinner ticket for his special place at Applebee's. He loves to eat. He's in college now. He's a good Christian guy. He's about twenty, I would say, and he went to, actually, he went out of the country and did some mission work right after that. And I did not want to call him as a witness. I feel like higher power put him where he needed to be, and he certainly didn't need to testify for me. So I did not put him down as a witness, although he told me that he heard the medic say, she hit you purposely and deliberately. Don't be afraid. Unlock your door. We've got to get you out of the car. It could burst into flames. She hit you very hard. So I got, he helped me out. And then, as we were over there, and I told Ms. Conway that if she left, that she would be arrested. And she said, I was just trying to get your parking place. I said, well, you were in the shoe store, according to the witnesses. And I said, do you have a handicap sticker? She said, no, I do not. I said, well, then you can't park here, and you certainly cannot drive. There's only, there's only three other customers here, so you've got plenty of room. But Michael, Officer, this is the story, and then I'll be through. Officer Michael Sweat came over to me, and I, he asked me if I was going to the hospital. I said, yes. He said, well, I'll help you into the car. Why are you still here? I said, because I'm waiting for you to arrest them. And I went into what happened, and also the medic. And he told the medic that there's no need for you to be a witness. And the man that was blowing at me, he came over too. Well, how about me, he said, a very well-dressed man from Alabama. He was just stopped in there for some reason. I don't know. He had tears in his eyes. He said, I tried to warn her. I was the one that was blowing, ma'am. He said, because I felt like you're, when she hit your car, it was going to go over in top of my car, and the handicap sticker was going to come through. And he said, she hit her deliberately and purposely. She was sitting out there all that time with those lights on. He said, it sort of gave me a suspicion. Actually, as I look at it, it did me. So I have a good friend who's at CIA. He come all the way from Saudi Arabia. He said, Lois, I've got you a GBI that I want you to talk to. I want you to call Kimberly Williams. And she told me, Lois, I can't come up unless the police ask me to come and get involved in this investigation. So she said, the hindsight is 20/20, but if you just had your phone in your pocket, you could have pushed nine-one-one. He would have rushed out the door, get in the car. They left before the police come. But you did not. You just had your money, and it can happen to any of us. However, now I have a life alert. I hang around my neck. It's a GPS. I took her advice hard, and I never be without a phone. So Officer Sweat told me that he was ruling it. Mr. Gathman here told him, said she hit us so hard that I thought we were going to go over into the other, push that handicap pole into the truck coming that was blowing. And he said, no, no, no. It's, she didn't do anything wrong. She's just an inexperienced driver without a license. And so he said to me, you need to go on to the hospital. So he helped me into the car, buckled my seatbelt, and called the hospital, telling them that I was hurt. He said, I'm ruling this an accident. So I went to the chief of police with all of this. After I hired Hal Johns, the PI, he found out quite a lot of stuff about this young lady and her mother and all them. They're from New Jersey, New York. And so I've spent about $10,000 altogether on the last year on private investigators. But however, I have got no relief from the police. When I talked first to our new chief, Chief Merchant, he said, well, I wouldn't do exactly how Chief Merchant would handle this, but I don't know what I can do for you at this late a day. Well, I liked Chief Merchant. He told me, he said, Lois, you get me that witness. And he said, after he's read all the stuff that he read, that Hal Johns found out. And he said, I will open this case. That's exactly what he said. He said, however, do you and your friend, I had a guy with me that's, that with the cameras, with everything. He was a specialist in that. And also, I had a gentleman with me who worked with the, he was aviation administrator, worked for them. And so he said, my job has been to investigate why planes crash. And he said, I'm here just to be a friend to Lois and see if I can help in any way. So, and I also had the gentleman that, he has a security company. He knows cameras. He knows exactly why. And Chief Merchant said I wasn't in the car. That was because, when it was hit, that was because they don't have anything. The ATM thing is census motion. Of course, I was in the car. I had an appointment, actually, with my doctor the next day.
Excuse me a minute. We're almost out of time there. Would, would it be?
Excuse me a minute. We're almost out of time there. Would, would it be, uh, would it be appropriate maybe if you could meet with our city manager and, and our police chief and, and, and then they could come back and talk to the council about it? Would that be, would that be okay?
It would be okay. And I'm just grateful that I could come in and kind of, I've been wanting to come.
I don't normally interrupt, but we do have a long meeting tonight and it's going to take us a while. So I, I'm sorry to do that. But uh, I think if we could, if we could have our city manager and police chief kind of meet with you and, and talk about it and then come back. If there's something that we need to do, then you know, we'll certainly consider it.
Oh, I can, I thank you so much. And Susan over there is just a wonderful person. I met her.
Thank you.
And I told her I loved it so much here. I think I'll just come in out of the heat and just relax if you're welcome to come.
Thank you, Ms. Howard, very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay. Item eight A under old business, we have discussion of battery replacement program for seniors and the disabled. Uh, Mr. Rust? Pl- uh, please speak into the phone if we, if we would make sure everyone, I had a couple of questions about not being able to hear. So please speak into the, the microphone as clearly as you can. Thank you.
Um, Andy Bonner brought this topic up and the county has a program, Woodstock has a county program. And uh, uh, there's a lot of work that Andy's done on it. And I think my suggestion to you, Mr. Mayor, is to appoint a committee to look at the options and to see what's best for the city of Canton. We've got some good examples of programs around us that work. Let's just find out what's best for us. And make a proposal, come back to council and say, this is what we found. This is what we think might work well for us. Council decide.
Actually, actually I thought, does anyone else have any other comments? I, I thought it would probably be, be good too, to appoint a committee to, to look in, into this and to work with a couple of our citizens, including, including Mr. Bonner, uh, to see if we can come up with something that, that's workable for the city. I would ask Mr. uh, Mr. Huffman, if, if you and Mr. Rust would work with Mr. Bonner. And I believe you had another individual that, uh,
Yeah, a gentleman named Jack McCarthy, who lives in Soleil, has agreed to be on this committee also.
Interested in participating. So I'd say if we could, you know, those could get together and take a look at the scope of this thing and see if there's something that we can do and, uh, you know, I, I feel like, you know, if the county and the other cities provide this service, we ought to be able to do it. We just need to know exactly the best procedure and the most cost effective procedure for us. So anyway, if you would, we can do that. All right. Uh, anyone have anything else on that? Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Under new business, we have a discussion of the requests of a residential group to work after hours and weekends at Laurel Canyon Apartments. We definitely want to know what after hours means on this one. Okay?
Good evening. My name is Kurt Alexander. I'm representing the residential group. Um, my understanding at this point is standard work hours are Monday through Friday, seven AM to six PM. Alls we would ask for is the ability to work on Saturdays, probably from eight to five would be sufficient. Just because of the time of the year, you know, we start to enter the rainy season and we would just like the opportunity to make up time on a weekend. You know, in the event that it rains during the week. And obviously, the only potential issue for any surrounding residents or people in the area would be, you know, outside while we're doing the site grading, concrete work, framing, that sort of thing. But then, you know, once those operations end, after about six months or so of starting, everything typically moves inside. And even if we're out there working, you know, know what would be a little wiser for it. So that's basis of the plan.
Sounds pretty much like reasonable work hours. Uh, Ms. McGrue?
Hi, thank you very much. Um, I would like to talk about, uh, throw this idea out there. Saturday mornings are pretty sacred to people who travel to Atlanta to work. Not everyone gets up at eight o'clock. I'd like to consider nine o'clock instead of eight.
Okay.
That's pretty much what I was going to say as well. Um, I do a lot of work in, in other subdivisions and, and it's all nine o'clock is, is early. They usually start.
On the weekend?
Weekend.
Is that, does that work for you?
That, that's again, it's.
Ms. McGrue?
You might want to consider talking with HOA president to see what noise they have in their covenants, when noise can begin on weekends.
I'm sorry.
You know, HOA president, representatives in their covenants, they may have a time set for noise regulation.
Uh, my understanding was that this was a city of Canton code and that's why, you know, I'm here at the request to revise.
That is, that is correct. Yes.
Yeah, to revise the code. So, sorry.
Push your button there and speak in there. Yeah.
No, I, I, well, um, you know, it's interesting because this is a development that we have picked up. My, my, one of the partners in my firm started it in, I guess, two thousand and six when it originally got started. So they purchased the property from obviously the larger Laurel Canyon PUD. But as far as how that ties in from um, the HOA, the covenants, I, I don't know that at this point.
When, when are you planning to start?
Uh, we, we, at this point, we've got site plan approval. We haven't picked up the permits yet. We're in for our building permits as well. We'll probably start the site work prior to the buildings. I would say in the next thirty days, we'll be out there. Now, the majority of the grading, obviously the rock moving has already taken place. So it's really just kind of scraping the ground and then we can start pouring slabs. So.
Our, our decision then would, would be made at our next, the regular meeting, which would be the fifteenth. And this would also give some notice to the residents up there. And if they have any objections or concerns or anything, they can, can relay those to us, I think, during that period of time. But you, you, you're talking about in seven to six, was that right? Through the week? And then, uh, and then nine, say, till?
Well, my understanding is the seven to six is what's allowable. That, that's, that's the existing code. So we're not.
And you're talking about going till when then?
Well, I, I'm, I don't want to touch the, that's fine during the week.
Oh, you're just asking for the week, Saturday only?
I'm just asking for the additional day on Saturday.
Okay, like nine to five or something like that?
Nine to five would work fine.
Okay, gotcha. Anybody else have a question or anything? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, item B, presentation of the trail options from Heritage Park to Bowling Park by Atkins North American.
Um, back in, I guess, July, Atkins was tasked to come up with options to uh, look at trails, the trail from Heritage, Heritage to Bowling. Um, we've had a couple of progress meetings and they're here to present what we have come up with. John Boudreaux with Atkins will make the presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is John Boudreaux. I'm with Atkins. I've been with Atkins for over thirty years. And uh, had the fortunate opportunity to work for the city of Canton, probably for the last fifteen years on a number of uh, public planning projects and construction projects. So I feel fortunate again to be here tonight to talk about the long range trail plan for the city of Canton. Um, when we first started looking at the trails, um, there was some discussion about what we wanted to achieve. Obviously, we wanted to improve the quality of life for the city of Canton residents. We hope that the trail network that we would develop would create economic development, some of the specific areas along the river. Uh, we thought there were certainly educational, environmental and recreational transportation enhancements that could come out of this plan. Um, when you look at a, a trail plan or a greenway plan for a community, you're looking at a variety of, of improvement types, a bike way type improvements. Uh, there are both bike lanes that would be on existing roadways. There are share roads or share, share lanes, what they call, which is signing and striping of existing roads. There's multi-use paths that are located along roadways. And then of course, there's the off, uh, off-road most multi-use trail. So we looked at an option, all four of these as options in the, uh, in this master plan. Um, we had a, a study area that was pretty much identified for us. It was of course, the Heritage Trail, or excuse me, Heritage Park to Bowling Park, um, in, in the downtown area. I'm sure you're very aware of the, uh, the trails that have already been put into place, the Heritage Park and the Edward Park. Currently out to bid, uh, right now is the, the link, the blue section that's identified there, uh, the, the project. We just had a pre-bid meeting earlier this week. Uh, we had about six or seven contractors show up. We did a walk of the corridor, so they're familiar with the proposed improvements. It's about eighteen hundred linear feet. Our bids are, are expected in um, October thirteenth. So we're, we're hoping that we get several bids that the city can choose from, uh, as the most qualified contractor for that section of trail. And that will, again, link the Edward Park to Heritage Park. Next slide is what we interpret as the next phase, the phase one of the continuation of that trail. I'm going to quickly go through these slides and I'll get into more detail. The next phase, and that's indicated in the yellow area. The next phase is the purple area, which links from the Cherokee High School to Bowling Park. Uh, the third phase is Bowling Park improvements. You can see by the big asterisks there. And again, get into more detail as we get through these. The fourth phase is improvements throughout downtown, um, connecting to the existing trail system. And um, and then uh, there's several phases of that. Some are uh, just simple improvements on existing roadways. And then more significant improvements, including railroad crossings or bridge crossings. Next slide is the connection to Bowling Park where we left off. Um, the continuation along the river, on the north side of the river up to Bowling Park. That's phase five. And then uh, the phase, phase six is the connection to Harmon Fields. So what we're trying to do is link all these public improvements, all these parks, um, the river, the, the city and uh, the school in a, in a coordinated effort and kind of set some priorities as far as how these projects would be implemented. So there's a logical uh, phase to the construction of those facilities. Um, the, the last phase is uh, is a, is a trail section, uh, what we call the Edward River Education Wildlife Trail, which is, is currently a property that's not owned by the city. That would require some additional easements, as indicated in red. The first phase of the project is just a little under seven thousand linear feet. It's to connect the Marietta Highway, the YMCA, the uh, the, the apartments, I believe they're called the Riverview Apartments. It's located along the north side of the river. Um, the, the trail will basically on, basically be on the north side of the Santeri Sewer Easement. It'll work itself up the grade, um, that is currently the Comcast property. There's a pretty significant grade there. We've looked at it. We think we can make that grade transition. But the goal is to connect the high school to the trail system. Um, through our meetings, we had several meetings with the uh, the city manager, the Parks and Rec director, the engineering staff. And it was, it was felt that this connection to the high school was an important connection. Now you can have um, high school kids utilizing the trail to get back and forth to school as well as um, for activities running along the trail, utilizing the park facilities that are in place. Uh, there'll be some minor improvements that'll be required at the intersection, new crosswalks, curb and gutter, those types of improvements. Uh, possible some signal enhancements. Um, the, again, the goal was to not only um, connect the, the high school to the trail, but also connect the YMCA and the Riverview Apartments with the continuation of the trail up along Marietta Highway. There's currently an easement along the Riverview Apartments. You own the YMCA property. There's no additional easement, so it would be required there. In this first phase, there are several easements. One was the Comcast easement that would be required to, to implement this phase of the project. The uh, you can see the blow up of that area transitioning up, up the hill. In that, in that slide there. Next, uh, next slide is what we, uh, what we're calling phase two. It's to connect the high school down to Bowling Park. Currently, you can see in the two photographs there, there's an open swell, open channel along that side of Marietta Highway. There's an existing sidewalk that the intent is to make the sidewalk or the trail, the multi-use trail, ten feet wide in that area. Put the uh, the existing swell in a, um, in a culvert or in a pipe system. And allow, allow bikes and walkers and runners to be able to get from, uh, again, from the Heritage Trail, Edward Trail, up to the high school and then from the high school down to Bowling Park. There are, there are some other minor improvements, but again, no right of way is anticipated for that section of improvement. Roughly about fifteen hundred linear feet. Next slide is, is actually the improvement, what we're calling is the trailhead of Bowling Park. Um, currently, as you all know, you go out to Bowling Park, uh, as you transition from Marietta Highway into the park, you kind of dump right into the parking lot. Um, there's no access control really for people entering or accessing the park. It's just almost like a free for all to get out of the park for different high school events or, or different events that are used at the, uh, at the park. The goal is to kind of create um, Bowling Park, the entrance to the park, put a new face on it, uh, facelift it, provide access to the river. It's an access point where uh, people can input their boats, put, launch their boats. It's a place, uh, really to kind of enhance the front of the parks, to put a facelift on the park, reorganize the parking lot, reorganize the drive into the park, create a restroom facility. These are all items that would be considered as a trailhead um, uh, improvements. So that people that wanted to either access the river or get on the trail system, those facilities would be available to them to do that. And again, the trail that we showed, either, either connecting up Marietta Highway to the high school and then back down, or later phases which will connect along the river, um, back to the, the trail that's, uh, was earlier constructed in phase one. Um, again, uh, it's really to kind of enhance the park, make it more of a, what we call a trailhead facility. And some of the, the specific improvements are identified in the list here. Uh, we've done several trailheads. We've done for the Silver Comet Trail. We've done for Big Creek. Um, you know, they're very, very useful and very helpful for people to, to utilize the trail system. Some of the activities, the boat launching activities that could occur at that, that, that location. Um, and again, uh, part of these improvements, there, there would be um, landscape, site furnishing improvements that would be consistent throughout the trail that have been factored into the pricing of the trail, cost estimates for the conceptual design. You've already picked out benches that you've utilized in the park. You know, those benches, those trash receptacles would be, would be utilized again on these future phases. But there may also be landscape material that be typical, typically used throughout the, the corridor as well. This uh, this next phase, which we call the phase four, uh, is the pedestrian bridge. And so it's a very ambitious plan. You could see, and you'll see more as the, as, as I get through this. Is, is, you could see in purple is the connection, the stuff downtown is really the share road, where it's basically signage and, and striping that would be located on, on the main street in downtown. And then on West Marietta and then west, uh, continuing down to the river along West Marietta, crossing the railroad. The, as you cross the railroad and, and, and that upper left corner, it would continue back along the sod farm to, or pasture along to the river. And then create what we're, what we're calling as a riverfront plaza along that south side of the, uh, of the river. It's, uh, the plaza is, is aligned to, aligned with uh, West Main Street, um, continuation. It's almost about, it's less than a thousand feet, about a hundred feet from downtown. Ideal point to provide a connection. This is again, a pretty ambitious, long range plan, but it's hopefully to, to create some excitement for the railroad street area, um, for future redevelopment. I, I understand, you know, you're currently in the process of doing an LCI study. Some of these concepts or ideas will hopefully be integrated in, in that long range plan as well. But the, but the idea is that you create, much like in the city of Rome or, or Columbus here in Georgia, or maybe in Greenville, South Carolina, actually create a hard plaza edge to the riverfront where activities and events, uh, community events could be held. Um, that's really close to downtown here, really close to the downtown, less than a thousand feet from downtown. Uh, again, this is just a concept, but it's the, you know, you can see, you'll, you'll see the connection across the river. The idea is to, again, cross the river to the north side, um, create a, a plaza, urban space, boardwalk along the south side of the river and then a, a riverfront park, um, that would be locating a flood plain down below. And then hopefully that, that investment would, uh, whether it's a public, private type of investment, would help promote a future redevelopment of the, uh, the railroad street industrial area. Um, these are just some images of some of the character. Uh, you know, you have made a major investment in bridges and, and other facilities for the trail, uh, you and the county. You know, one of the interesting things- You know, one of the interesting things is how the design of those public improvements can help facilitate and spark excitement and redevelopment of certain areas. And one of the examples is, in the top right, is the waterfront along, in Greenville, South Carolina. Just, you know, made a major investment in a bridge and the character of that bridge and how it's, you know, really propelled itself into other public improvements. You know, and again, the Columbus River Walk, you know, how that investment in the community has really helped to reinvigorate the community, both in economic as well as a recreational activity type of scale. Just some character images, again, for that area that we, you know, we could see through your LCI process. You know, and we're not talking about, we're talking about redeveloping those buildings that are worth saving and adding to those structures in long term. The, one of the, outside of that center focus that aligns on the West Main Street is the trail connections along Woleska Street, connecting to that park or green space and then the western connection down Marietta along the sod farm and then back to the center. And the share road markings that would be downtown and payment markings, signage and payment markings. The Phase 4B of that, which we saw as a whole separate phase, you can see in the bottom slide is the, that's the continuation of West Main Street when it enters into Railroad Street currently. It's a loading dock area. You know, we've worked on other projects where those are great opportunities as, you know, as new development occurs. It could be a commercial development, it could be restaurants, it could be office space. But really, create that center area as a plaza area, more inviting area to transition people back to that park in the back. And we broke that out as a separate phase because there would be a railroad crossing that would be required, the accessibility across the railroad at that particular point. In the earlier phases, we were utilizing the existing railroad crossings. This is the Phase Five, which is, which picks up from the earlier phase, Phase One. This Phase One, we, again, went up to the high school. We connected to the high school immediately. This Phase Five is the continuation off of Phase One along the north side of the river to Bowling Park, just roughly under four thousand feet. And so, if you weren't at the high school or, you know, if you wanted to just go directly to Bowling Park, you would, you could of course do that. And then that, you know, the Phase Six was the connection to Harmon Park and the park that is just north of Harmon Park. And long-term, again, is the potential to create what we see is, you know, a pretty unique environment for education opportunities, environmental opportunities in that last track of property. And again, there are no easements that the city currently holds for that, so we've kinda moved that out into a longer-range implementation project. Pretty ambitious plans. We don't certainly anticipate that this can be done in the next year or next five years. These are really long-range, long-range concepts, cost estimates for the city's consideration. I think with your current LCI studies, some of these projects may be revised to reprioritize them or readdress, you know, some of the connections. But what we did, again, as a conceptual master planning study, look at the costs. We have very detailed costs. We broke down, you know, everything from square foot, square yards of concrete to grading cost. This cost does not include any right-of-way acquisition. It does include design and construction oversight, but it does not include any right-of-way acquisition that would be required. So again, big ambitious plans. I think, make no small plans and, like you have in the past, you've been aggressive and forward-thinking. And hopefully, these plans and concepts will provide some thought for you as you move forward. And thank you again for the opportunity to be part of this effort. Enjoyed working with the city and wish you success.
Okay. Mr. Huffman, you have a question?
Yes. And looking at some of the pictures you had here, particularly in Columbus, where they got the Chattahoochee running through there, where it goes up and down. We have a similar situation with Etowah here. It doesn't take much water for us to flood. In the various phases here, I don't really know how to answer the question, but how much is this up and down of the river gonna add to the cost or has that been figured into the cost that you've already got here? I mean, the pictures of Columbus, you can see the walls are built up.
Yes, sir.
But I don't know if we're gonna be able to do that here, are we?
Well, I think, I think you can do it here. I think it's been done in other places, so certainly, I think you can do it here. You know, most of this, most of those recommendations, these trails are in flood. They are, they are gonna be inundated over time in floods. I mean, the goal is to build those improvements so they can withstand those temporary conditions. And, you know, based on the cost estimate that we've provided, we provide some significant costs associated with walls and foundations and things of that nature.
I think that boardwalks are proposed. The key thing you said is they are built to withstand those conditions. I think that's what you said.
Those temporary conditions, yes.
Yes.
Their plan to withstand those temporary conditions.
So, we are ruling out, going underneath Highway Five over there at the, connecting to Bowlin Park?
Yes, sir.
And is there a particular reason that you decided to rule it out?
Why I ruled it out? I think we moved it back to a later phase.
To go across at the stoplight in front of the high school?
Yes, we're gonna go across at that point, at Phase One, yes.
Yeah, my question was, why are we going that direction versus going underneath the highway?
It was based on some earlier concepts that we reviewed with the city staff. It came across that it was important to connect to the high school. It was one of the thoughts. Plus, the additional consideration was the overall cost. To go from where it terminates now to Bowling Park was, you can see, it's roughly about three, you know, three and a half million dollars. So we kinda tried to break it out into more manageable, fundable projects, basically, so.
Well, I love the idea about bringing the high school. You put it right in front of them and they're obviously gonna be using it for their track and cross-country events. But that doesn't mean they couldn't come out from underneath Bowlin Park either.
No, sir. And again, I think it was, you know, it was discussed about fun, you know, I think probably one of the things we leaned towards was more fundable-type projects.
Yeah.
And again, having manageable costs. And so, that probably driven that alignment more than probably anything.
One last comment, and it's a small thing, but Bowlin Park, I don't recall, and I don't go over there often. We need playground equipment. And I'd see we have a fire pit and things like that that, I don't know if we'll be using too many fire pits, but if you might think about putting some playground equipment in there for the younger kids?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodman?
Yes, I wanted to ask, Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three. If you were to implement those phases, what type of time or timetable would you say that would take?
To, from design to construction?
Yes.
Again, a lot of it depends on...
Or to completion.
I'm sorry?
All the way to completion.
To completion. A lot of it has to do with the funding. If it's local funding, it can be significantly shortened. And I would say there would probably be at least, probably six to eight months of design work and then the construction of that probably would be at least a year to a year and a half of construction, so.
Well, all three, all three of those phases?
Yes, those three phases, yes.
Thank you.
Again, you know, design permitting type of reviews do take some time. It's not all, you know, it's not all time spent on a drawing board. There's coronation time with different agencies that would be required. So, I would say we would be able to get the approvals and the permits certainly less than a year, more towards the eight-month period, I think. And then, construction, at least a year and a half to two years. It's a fairly good size, fairly long. When you add, you're talking about seven thousand, almost eight thousand feet, so that's about a mile and almost two miles, mile and three quarters, so. And plus the improvements, the phasing that would be required at Bowling Park, managing access at the park during construction, you know, that would all need to be coordinated. And I would, I would also defer to, I know the city's got a number of other projects that are going on at Bowling Park that would need to be coordinated with that effort, so. Some of the rehab of that facility.
One other thing I'd like to ask. Our new park, Etowah Park over to Harmon, I mean, to Heritage Park. We have that bridge across there already, but our trail is not complete. Did you all look at that? Is that part of what this?
What we've done is we've looked at the connecting the two parks, the Etowah and Heritage Park. And there's about eighteen hundred feet that's now currently constructed. And again, that's been, Mr. Shirley was a local surveyor that did the plans. We worked with the city. There were some minor modifications that we did to the plans. We helped the city prepare a bid manual and the project is out to bid. And expecting those bids mid-October. We've identified ninety days to substantial completion and a hundred and twenty days to final completion of the project. So, depending on when we receive the bids, hopefully, we get several bids that we can, the city can consider. November, you get a chance to look at those bids and make a decision on whether you want to proceed with the contract or recommend the contractor. So, early next year, it should be complete.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, I just wanted to commend you on a great job. I think it's a great plan. I think if you look at what has happened in Greenville or in Columbus since they made this investment, the economic, you know, impact has been significant. So I know the cost is significant here, but I think it's very exciting and I think it's something that's long overdue that we take a look at, so, great job.
Good, thank you. And again, you know, those costs that we've identified there, depending on what happens with that parcel, could be, you know, a combination of both public and private type of investments.
A couple of questions. First of all, you mentioned the, it says the total length is six point six eight miles?
Yes, sir.
Now, that's, that's not all new?
That's new work.
That's new, so it's, that's six point six eight miles from there?
It's six, it's just under seven new miles of trail. And actually, you know, there's sidewalk improvements in Bowling Park and things of that nature that, you know...
Okay. The other thing, how big of a hurdle is it to overcome the undisturbed buffer or conservation buffers that you have along the river there?
It is a significant permitting issue. Most of the trail, though, is, with the exception of that hard, you know, that hard boardwalk or hard, is outside of that twenty-five-foot buffer. The majority, the remainder of the trail, with the exception of that one bridge crossing and the hard, hard board edge is outside that twenty-five-foot buffer. Again, that's a reason why that's been kinda moved back to get that permitted. You know, obviously, we see that as, you know, it's not gonna be done easily. You know, the question is whether we can construct that or not. I think you can construct it, but it's gonna be a permitting challenge.
Okay. Mr. Allen?
It said, it noticed, you had mentioned the, identified the easements and acquisitions and/or acquisitions. Do we have any kind of feel for what the cost on those might be at this point? That might be a better question for Mr. McDavid. None at all right now?
And I think on some of that, you're gonna have to decide whether or not you're looking at just the easement for the trail or whether or not a property owner wants to sell an entire property. So, you know, I mean, that's definitely what we're gonna have to work with on that.
Mr. Huffman?
If you're looking at the total cost here, estimated cost of twenty-one and a half million dollars, the big elephant in there is Phase 4A, eleven million dollars. If we took out that one phase, I don't know how much that would take, how much that would take away from the total project. But we could really get, with a ten-million-dollar bond, Mr. Mayor, we could really make some headway on this and without doing a whole lot of damage. But my question, I guess, would be is, if you didn't have Phase 4A, would that take away a great deal from the overall project?
One of the reasons why, as a group, we looked at Phase 4A was the fact that we do have a current LCI master plan that's going on. And the whole idea with the master plan through the Atlanta Regional Commission is to create transportation, pedestrian improvements. And for communities that aren't used to working through that LCI process, giving them ideas of what you want to see in the future is part of the way that you're eligible for certain federal transportation dollars to make those improvements. So, we specifically asked the consultant to look in that area, to come up with some things that we might consider working with a consultant on the LCI for putting in place, because if those funds are available, then that would be an adequate project for that. Additionally, this is the area where we have the most private property involved until you get into Phase Seven. And knowing that having a plan in place and perhaps having a developer or developers that are looking in specific areas, we could add that into a master plan. I think that would probably be the phase where we would be more, more looking at private participation with maybe some public participation. But I think that most expensive phase is probably gonna have more private dollars associated with it.
Well, I would agree with you, Mr. Peppers. If we do some of the other phases immediately, when I say immediately, a couple of, three years or something like that, then the private sector would be more likely to join in for the eleven-million-dollar Big Kahuna. So if we went to the public for ten million dollars or twelve million dollars and got all these going, and then we, like you say, we'll have the plan for the LCI. And then, when the private sector comes in, there's the plan and that's part of the deal and we get it done. But I definitely agree that it should be in the plan, but I would like to see some of these other things. But let's get a committee together and start working in that direction. Mr. Mayor, what do you think?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item of recommendation of the award of the National Guard Army paving contract in the amount of one ninety-five, five fifty-three, eighty-three to Barto Paving.
Yeah, we advertised that project, as you know, part of that whole land swap with the wastewater plant. We only got one bidder. We got a really good price. I think our original estimates were around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but... And talking with Barto, they're fine with moving forward, probably with a notice to proceed mid, I think nineteenth of October to move forward. They're still within their weather period. And assuming everything, all the equipment at the Armies are the way, they said they should be out of there in, you know, a week to ten days.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Adam D., discussion of recommendation of the award Canton Creek Bridge Repair Contract in the amount of three fifty-seven, five forty-three to Masana Construction Inc.
Again, advertised that one according to the bid laws. Received, I believe it was six bidders on this one. Our original estimate was in the, came in right around where we estimated, around three fifty. Talking with this contractor, they have some prior commitments up against weather, so they wanted to push their start date a little later. But what that would have done is would have put construction in around the holiday time, so we have decided to push construction off until...
so we have decided to push construction off until after the first of the year. And they're fine with that, they'll hold their bid price. Now, this one, the, the plan is to close the bridge two to three weekends to get the work done. They'll probably close from like nine o'clock Friday night to five o'clock Monday morning.
Just on the weekends?
Just on the weekends. I've talked to them briefly about pedestrian access during that time and whether they can either make pedestrian access on the bridge during their working hours. They, they'll look into it, their concern is for safety, both of the public as well as their workers, but.
There's a lot of pedestrians right in that area.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's, it's an issue, they're aware of it and hasn't really been solved yet, so.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, just a couple of questions. One, on looking at, at all the bids, the big disparity between traffic control, between like the next highest bidder, you know, fifty thousand to ten thousand, any, any explanation for that or?
That's, you know, sometimes they'll, they'll, I don't want to say unbalance their bids, but they may have a certain way of doing things. I mean, I think it's going to be involve some, a lot of message boards, rerouting of traffic during this, this time.
But one of them is actually two hundred and sixty-seven thousand for traffic control.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure what the details of their, that's all we've got, was just the line.
That's half the price of the project.
Did we specify the traffic control specifications that we required or?
We tell them they need to have a traffic control plan, we don't tell them how to do it.
Okay. And then my next question, I noticed in, in the contract it had as Arcadis would be representative engineer for the project. Is, will that be additional fees?
That was our, that was.
Have we already paid, that's one we paid.
Well, we've already authorized their change, yeah. It was like nineteen thousand dollars or something to do the construction admin, and they'll, they'll do some inspections and shop drawing reviews and technical questions and that kind of thing.
So, we aren't anticipating any additional fees from them?
No.
To, to supervise the project?
We've already, that's already been taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Huffman?
Thank you. I apologize, I haven't read everything as closely as I normally do because of my family issues, but the question I have, a while back when it was brought to our attention that the bridge, the bridge needed repair, that we had two estimates of the repair, one was a temporary, I guess, or a modified or some lesser amount versus a, a better fix. Which one are we looking at here?
We're looking at the, the repairs. We look, we look, yeah, no, we looked at the, as opposed to a replacement, that was the other option and.
So, this would be closer to the more expensive fix?
No, this is the, no, this is the lesser of the fixes.
This is the cheaper fix?
Yeah, I think a, a bridge replacement, you're looking at probably, you know, I think we were over, I don't know how many million dollars on, on a new bridge.
So, did, did they concur with the previous survey of that, that, that a temporary fix is adequate on an eighty-year-old bridge?
Yeah, they're doing a lot of structural upgrades to the beams as part of this, this program and, yeah, they've, they're confident this, this will last for a while.
I hate to ask this, but what's a while?
Excuse me?
What is a while?
How long, how long is what he's asking? How long will it last?
Oh.
When you say a while, I just.
A while, oh, I'm sorry.
A while could be next year.
Fifteen, twenty years before you need to, to start looking at it again.
We won't have to worry about that one. All right, next item.
I had one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Dave, what is the detour route? I mean, it seems like when that bridge is closed, you've got a big distance to.
I think the initial, I think this, looking at it, you'd, you'd have to divert traffic up John Pettit, down East Main to five seventy-five and come back down exit sixteen, back down to, to one forty.
Is there any allowance on the weekend for emergencies or emergencies are going to have to take that same detour?
I'm not sure if, you know, how they would handle that. We haven't really sat down to discuss any of that yet.
Just, it seems like a potential bad situation, actually.
Well, yeah, obviously we'd be working any sort of traffic control plan with, with police and fire as well.
How many weekends will, will it actually be close?
I think they said, I think the, they estimated two to three.
Two to three?
Okay, thank you.
Right, thanks, Dave. Discussion of possible action to declare emergency with the repair of the P Ridge Lift Station, something that obviously we need to do quickly.
Yeah, the P Ridge Lift Station, we had some issues with some pump failures. It was built in, I believe, two thousand and one, two thousand and two range. It's got three pumps, one of them was in the shop, one of them failed, and the third one was barely keeping up.
You've got portable out there now, right?
Yeah, the station is located adjacent to the reservoir and we've got a pump out there now that's pretty big. I mean, it's a, it's an awful lot of, lot of head to pump against and, and the declaration of an emergency allows a couple of things. It allows us to seek a Jifa emergency loan, which is, I think, we can get up to five hundred thousand at point six-two percent for a period of ten years. And it also allows us to just get a contractor in and go, you're not subject to the state bid laws and things like that.
Okay, do I have a motion that we declare this an emergency and approve the repair of the P Ridge Lift Station?
Some will.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay.
And, and just for your information, right now we've had some, I think our worst-case cost estimate is around four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
One quick, one quick question, please, sir. Is this the same station or is it the same reason? When we did a study a while back and we showed pictures, we had one station that was loaded with grease and it was coming from Great Sky. Is that, is it, is this the station that is loaded with grease or?
No, no, it's a different one. This is the one, um, adjacent to, it's, it's right, it's pretty close to the reservoir down near the, you know, that landfill is on, it's right next to there.
Yeah, I know exactly where. With the grease situation, is that still prevalent?
I'm not sure how, if, if that's improved or not. You know, we, we have a couple of options in trying to deal with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, discussion of the Hickory Log Creek Dam maintenance.
We are going to be doing some root, I don't want to call it routine, recommended maintenance on the crest gates at the dam. This is recommended by the gate manufacturer, this is the gate that sits on the, on the face of the dam. We're going to be inspecting the hundred and ten bolts that, that are, make sure they're all torqued down properly, we're going to inspect the gates themselves. In order to do that, we have to drop the, the water level of the reservoir down about six feet, and that's the reason for the timing. Going to take about thirty days to drop the level to a point where we can work, have the manufacturer come in, do their inspection, do whatever they need to do, and then another thirty days to pump it back up to full pool.
So, we're talking about ninety days from start to finish?
No, they can probably be in and out in a week. The biggest time is.
Close, close access to it.
We could probably, you know, open access, well, let me step back a little bit, during, when we're dropping the level, I believe the street department is looking to do some improvements and modifications to the boat ramp. And so, we'll, we'll take advantage of the water level being down to take care of that and, and then once, once that's all done and we can start pumping water back in, then we can certainly open it again. I mean, I know there's a, there's a map.
Mr. Grant, I'm sorry, Mr. Grant, I had a question.
I was just going to inquire what the estimated, total estimated cost for this is and, and I'm assuming that we just pay our portion of that.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't have that. Yeah, I know it's been budgeted and, but I'm, I'm not sure, I, I, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Next item, discussion of bid and award of contract for water treatment plant filter media replacement.
I think this is my last one here. We put out, we put out an advertisement to replace all the media in the filters at the water plant. Last time that was done, I think, was about six, seven, eight years ago. We have to periodically change that media. We can tell the, the runtimes of the, between backwashes is increasing, so we got three bids and I think it came in a little bit above our estimates. We do, we did include some allowance items as well as an item for repairs of cracks, for crack injection, but we don't know if we have any, so it could be twenty thousand dollars worth of allowances that we don't even use, so.
Okay, anyone? Okay, next item, discussion of the annual update of capital improvements element and five-year short-term work plan for Canton's impact fee program.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a requirement of the state of Georgia, Georgia's impact fee laws. This is an annual update. We have submitted advertisements to run, we will be requesting city council conduct a public hearing on this annual update at the next city council meeting on October the fifteenth. We would note for council members in the police capital improvements element sheet, there are proposals for new items, additional weapons and mobile digital communication systems that were not contained within last year's budget. Police Department requested you consider approving these items, they are in compliance with the requirements of impact fee laws for expenditures of those funds. Also would ask mayor and council to note that within the road capital improvements element staff is proposed, city council consider adding Prominence Point Parkway, Keter Drive. There is a typo in that sheet and it just says Prominence Point, but the actual name is Prominence Point Parkway. I placed a little drawing before each of you prior to the city council meeting and this section of roadway, Prominence Point Parkway, from its intersection with Lantana Trail to the intersection with Keter Road is a one hundred and twenty-foot right-of-way which contains an existing one lane of traffic in each direction with streetlights and sidewalks on both sides of the street. There's more than enough room if city council wishes to consider four-laning a section of that roadway. From the intersection with Keter Road, Prominence Point Parkway name ends and the continuation of the road to unincorporated Cherokee County continues as Keter Road. This section of Keter Road is an eighty-foot right-of-way which contains one lane of traffic in each direction, it has sidewalk on one side of the street and no streetlights. There have been some suggestions in regards to upgrading this section of roadway with streetlight sidewalks. We feel that within the eighty-foot right-of-way, we could get a grass median, five-foot sidewalks, grass strip, four lanes and part of an improvement would request that you consider allowing that to be added within our road CIE. Available to answer any questions any of the council members have.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Discussion of the youth strategic plan, Ms. McGrew?
Thank you very much. I learned of a youth strategic plan in June at the GMA conference in Savannah. A youth strategic plan can have different names such as a children's bill of rights. Times are different now from when you and I were children, Nana's not next door, baking cookies when we get home from school because mom's out working in the field, mom and Nana both are at work or other circumstances that are unlikely. I wanted to talk about our youth, making a plan for them to ensure their success, that they thrive. It would be a collaboration with the city, the Board of Education, the community, parents, health experts, both mental and physical health experts, public safety to name a few. A youth master plan is a living document, it would change from year to year because circumstances change, demographics change. And this document strives to ensure the safety, the health and the well-being of our young people. In creating a youth master plan, we would strive to coordinate services and supports and opportunities that young people need to thrive. I believe this will also bring many organizations in the city who are child-centered to the table and work together for the common goal of our children. I've talked with principal of Canton Elementary, I've talked to a board member of CASA, I've spoken with a Board of Education member and the director of Cherokee Family Violence Center. Everyone's quite enthusiastic about this and ready to see how this can happen. I need to have more conversations with more organizations. I've also talked with Boys and Girls Club Director. I need to talk with the Y and it's going to be a process. So, most cities take two, three, four years to come up with a strategic plan for their youth. I'd like to see Canton take up this banner and if the council chooses to do it, to get our strategic plan for youth together in two years' time. Our demographics are changing, our parental situations are changing and our students, our youth need more from us than they ever have before. Along with the adults will involve students in the process. They will help us construct the plan, this will give them a sense of leadership and it'll also teach them how to communicate with adults and how, how to work and how cities work. What I needed, what we do for our youth is to ensure that they thrive. I wanted to tell you what Ms. Long, who's principal at Canton Elementary, said that our children need. She talked about mental health and, and I understand that our kids' needs are different now, but to hear somebody actually say in words, "Our children are in need of mental health help," really struck me, made me very sad. We need to help the parents with transportation, to get the parents to the activities that children have, curriculum night, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts and Brownies. We need English lessons for the parents so that they can communicate effectively. We need activities for the kids and she praised the city for our first Fridays and our chili cook-off and those activities, but for the children's sake, we need more, a place for them to go rather than to hang out in the parking lot and shoot baskets and, you know, idleness and trouble ensues, we've all raised kids, it happens. She encouraged me to find a way to build a sense of community between the city and our Latino population, and we know that the Latino population doesn't really trust the form of government and I understand that completely. So, this process might help build a sense of community to show all of our populations that we are working towards communicating with you and helping you navigate through life here in Canton. Speaking with a member of the Board of CASA, he was concerned about children's safety in their homes and in their communities, how can we help with safety? He was also concerned about children being hungry in the summer. We know that in Canton, they have access to breakfast and lunch and often that's, that's all the meals that these children, some of these children receive, but in the summer, how are they eating? He was also hoping that we could have more activities centrally located for the students. He brought to mind some- He brought to mind something I'd seen on the news called Safe Haven. And what that is, is a sign on a building, not a government building. It could be at Beloved, it could be at The Snug, it could be at the Fire Department or the Arts Center, the Historical Society. And any place that displays this sign, Safe Haven, a person who is being stopped could go in there and know that they would be safe in that building. A lost child would know that they could go into this building and receive help finding their, their parents. Anyone who felt threatened could go into this establishment and immediately find help. They would be safe in that environment. That's something we could do immediately. We talk about that and, and establish some safe havens with some of our establishments. Is that using established too many times in one sentence? Cultural activities. It would be lovely if we had a cultural center where we can learn from our different cultures and we can understand them, they can understand us, share our cultures, share our food, share our fun. That's all I had. Well, I wanted to read to you what some cities have done. India, California, in two thousand and four, India officials realized that the city was experiencing rapid growth and changing youth demographics. In response, the city council created a youth master planning committee that included youth from the outset. The planning committee established five focus areas for the plan. After-school, education, health, parks, youth facilities and transportation. One of the outcomes of these discussions was a change to the local park system in which the city created a new teen center, built two new parks and renovated six other parks. The city council approved and finalized the plan in December two thousand and five. Savannah was the first city to adopt NCL, National League of Cities, platform for strengthening families and improving outcomes for children and youth, which has served as a foundation for the city's planning efforts. Omaha, Nebraska Mayor Mike Fahey and other community leaders commissioned SRI International to examine ways in which the city could ensure that all local youth received the education, the training and the support that they need. This result, research resulted in a master plan for investing in children, youth, published in April two thousand and seven. I'm in the embryonic stages of investigating this. I'd like to continue. What do you think?
Any comments, questions? Do you know of any of the plans that may have already been put in place in the state of Georgia?
Savannah.
Savannah, I'm sorry, okay. Okay, Mr. Grant?
I think it's a great idea and a great concept and you would have my full support, so.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Rust?
I was in Portland, Oregon this summer and I, we've talked about trails and they've got some fairly unique trail systems out there. A lot of fun to, to walk and climb in many cases. But when I was there the last time, I was struck by a group of young people out building, redoing a, a trail, a particular trail. They all had T-shirts on, they were young people, it was summer, of course, they didn't have school. And I, I just couldn't believe how many they had, there must have been several hundred. It's amazing how much you can do when you get several hundred kids together and it gives a little sense of purpose. I mean, you can have a youth center in all these places, but eventually kids have to have something to do. And I thought, by creating what you're talking about, Sandy, you create a natural place for, for suggestions to go out and volunteer, to do something to those centers. They say, hey, here's what we're gonna do and, and all of a sudden you got a whole bunch of people that wanna do it. And I know Dan Owen has always talked about how the Boy Scouts are gonna help with the bowling park, reconstructing the park. He said, just, just give me some little money and I can do it. But it's amazing how when you have two hundred kids that are looking for something to do and the energy to do it can really help you get something done. So I, I, I love the program, whatever, whatever you need to do, it, it sounds wonderful.
We have a few hundred students at risk.
A few hundred students what?
At risk, be it economically, socially.
That's, that sounds like a low estimate to me, but we've got a lot of kids that have problems.
I'd like to err on the side of caution, but I'd like to go forward and talk with more people. I'm sure the YMCA, our own Parks and Rec Director. There are, there are many layers of people to talk to, to get their input and bring back more information to you January. And then let's talk about putting together a board and then doing a strategic plan for youth, possibly coming up with a little less stiff name for it.
I, I just had one other thought and what, the vision for Canton two thousand and fifty, when we started that and we did the first year, I was involved with it until I got, came on council. I couldn't be on it anymore. But the thing that struck me was the size of our Hispanic population. And this is a group, as you described, and they don't trust government, they don't trust a lot of people and they're kind of invisible, but they, they're very, very fast. They're thirty percent of Canton's population and growing very, very rapidly. And we have to address that and if somebody can figure out how to tie into that, that's a very needed portion of our population.
Mr. Huffman?
I, I think it's a great project, but I know that the Y, because I've been on the board for that for four, five years, we've tried desperately, we're trying to find ways to tap into the Hispanic, Latino market and unfortunately, we haven't been able to do it as well, near as well as we, we wanted to. We've, we've gotten a few on our board, but even that has been difficult. But it's something that you, you can count on the Y. And I just see that John Hicks, who was our director, has, has left the meeting, but you can surely count on the Y being right behind you on any endeavors there. One area, I'm not sure I heard, but I know is strongly would like to get behind this and that is our churches. I know our First Methodist Church over here on the hill, our Reverend Jim over there is, I mean, he is after those kids in the biggest way, in the biggest way. He is so passionate about that and surely tap into that. That is, might be your best bet over and above what you've already mentioned.
Absolutely, the faith-based organizations are on the list of communicating with them. And we just have to keep trying. You mentioned you didn't get as much participation from the Latino community as you hoped at the Y, so we just keep trying.
Ms. T. Allen?
I just wanted to mention, we, I've been able to attend the education subcommittee of the Vision two thousand and fifty committee. And several of the items that you listed that you heard from the principal were mentioned at that meeting as concerns and areas that needed work. And they're trying to come up with ways, kind of paralleling what you were talking about. One of the things that came out in that meeting, because we were able to meet, have Dr. Hightower come to our regular meet, come to the regular Vision Committee meeting, which I sat in on. And they brought us what we had been, our partners in education agreement with the, at the school board. And Mr. Peppers has agreed to look into that and updating it and getting that back in force to get our city more involved and working more closely with the school board. So I just wanted to applaud you for your, all your work and there are other people in the same, thinking the same thing and it's, there's a lot of support out there for it.
We get them all to the table. We're gonna, I hope it's a great big table and, and work really hard for this.
Thank you, okay. Next item. Discussion of bid and, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jack, I didn't see you.
I think it's a wonderful plan you're, you're talking about. I know it's, it's a big project. It's something that's been near and dear to my heart for a long time. I've been involved with youth activities for thirty-two years and since I've been here in Canton. And there are lots of things that can go on, that aren't going on, that we could, we could reach them. But we just, and it seems like this council has the heart to do it and I, I look forward to that. I'd like to serve on that and help you in any way I can.
Okay. Next item, discussion of bid and recommendation for replacement of the city phone system. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir. We have, had gone out to bid in the month of September for new phone system for City Hall and all of our off-site locations as well, fire, police, public works. And currently, our system that we have does not integrate those phones in together. And so, you know, voicemail options are different at different facilities. The ability to quickly transfer from one facility to another is not there in some cases. And that was the reason why we went out to bid for a new all-inclusive system. We did receive eight bids. One of the bids came in after the deadline and so you'll note that that's red in your list. So we had seven bids that were submitted ahead of the deadline. I will let you know on, on the sheet that you have with the Excel document where we've got, got the bids in there and their breakdown, there is one typo on the one next to the bottom forerunner. The last column there that says forty-five thousand dollars is the total one-year cost of ownership. That should be the same number that's in the middle column that says total cost of eighty-four thousand. So that is a typo. Staff is recommending awarding, that you would award the bid to Windstream Communications, which was the lowest bidder in the process. That price was fifty-five thousand dollars for the, for the total program. That includes all equipment as well. And breaking out the monthly cost of actually running that system, it's actually gonna save us about twenty-four hundred dollars a month from what we're currently paying based on these individual systems that are located in different facilities. So there will be some up costs, upfront costs associated with integrating everything, but the monthly cost of service will actually go down from the city perspective.
Okay, Mr. Rust?
Yes, sir.
Hey Billy, who are we using right now?
We are using Windstream right now.
We are? What, what's our current cost? How much, we're saving about twenty-five hundred a month?
We're, are, are, we're roughly around sixty-two to sixty-eight hundred a month on, on all of our phone bills citywide and all of our facilities. This will take us down roughly twenty-four hundred dollars a month in, in monthly savings.
Why, why is this a saving? I mean, it's the same company, is it just a new system or?
It's a change in technology, it is a new system and it's integrated across all of our facilities.
So even though we're gonna spend money, we're gonna actually net save money over the first year even?
Over the long term, we will save money.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Grant?
I was gonna mention that, that, that the system would pay for itself, but I think most, more importantly, provides better customer service to, to our citizens and residents because I've had several complaints about communication and, and trying to get two different departments and different phone numbers and all. And if I understand this correctly, we could, if someone called City Hall, we could patch them through to any department or.
Correct. And, and.
In one system, basically.
And one of the things I, I particularly like about the system as well is the way it's set up. It also includes voicemail to email. So that if someone does call one of our offices and they do get a voicemail, it sends it directly to our email, which for city staff that are out in the field, they can get that on their phone and they can make that call from the field as opposed to having, you know, having to wait until the next day. So it does provide efficiencies. It also gives us the ability to see which staff members are answering their voicemails to make sure that there's some accountability in that standpoint as well.
Okay, Mr. Huffman?
Mr. Peppers, do we have, we have this in the budget, how much did we allocate for it?
I'll let, I'll let Camille answer that one.
Last year, if I'm not mistaken, we allocated approximately thirty-five to forty thousand. Am I correct, Mr. Ingram? Thirty thousand just for the equipment. And we didn't get to it technically last fiscal year due to several changes we have had in City Hall and items that, that have come up. So it is, it is above what we anticipated, but as council member Grant stated, it will pay for itself.
But we got, we got roughly thirty thousand dollars in this year's budget to spend towards the fifty-five?
Correct, correct. And we should see some savings after we implement it and what we've budgeted for those monthly phone bills across the various units.
Okay. Next item. Discussion of list of Canton streets maintained, private, not accepted for maintenance, GDOT streets. Mr. Peppers?
One of, one of my priorities coming in was to try to help the city as it relates to our capital infrastructure. And part of that is an understanding as to what streets, what, what the status of streets are within our municipal boundaries. There are some streets that are maintained by Georgia Department of Transportation, for instance. There are some streets that are considered private streets within, within the city. There are some streets that have been platted as public streets in developments but have never been officially accepted for maintenance by the city. And then, of course, there are those streets that we already maintain. And one of the things that, that staff has worked on is producing this map and list of streets for you to look at so that you know exactly which streets fit in which categories. Most individuals may not know what the streets fit in, in what category. Our goal is to be able to put that information out into the public and also use it in the future as a way to help grade streets, as a way to help figure out which streets need to be, need to be paved as what projects come up. For instance, when we have the Lamig funds from the state, we would quickly be able to go through the list of streets, the length of those streets, the status of those streets as it relates to paving and figure out which streets we want to get done as part of that project. Additionally, as council proposes additional funds in sploshing money to be used for paving, we would go back to that comprehensive list and figure out the scoring on those streets and which streets need to be done in that round based on the funds that are available. But the first step in the process is having that complete list of streets and understanding which ones fall in which category.
And Mr. Huffman?
Mr. Peppers, don't we have some roads that are, that fit inside the blue shaded area, which would be basically the city of Canton, that are county roads?
So there are, there are occasional situations where there are roads that have, say, municipality on one, on one side and county on the other. In this document, we, we basically have spelled out the roads that we maintain, the public roads that we maintain. So if it is an area of a public road that we are not maintaining, it may show up as GDOT right-of-way in there. And then there are some other roads that you'll see in there that, that, that cross out. But what we've highlighted, if you look at the memo and then you look back at the map, what we've highlighted in green are those roads that we have accepted for maintenance as a city based on, based on the dedication of the roads to us.
Should we not, many of the Canton citizens who are taxpaying citizens, of course, that live on some of these county roads, should we not be taking them in? Are those some of the roads that are not in good repair because the county just doesn't get to them?
Well, you know, it really depends on what's on both sides of the roads. I mean, based on, if you look at your, if you look at your city map, there are portions of roads that flow outside of the city limits into unincorporated pockets or peninsulas of unincorporated area that don't fit within the city. If, if it doesn't fit in the city limits, we're not going to maintain it because we don't have that, that right to maintain it. That is a true county area.
I know, I know we don't have the right now, but should we not work with the county to come up with something that's more logical? That it's inside the blue area, it's us or a private or GDOT. But to have little dots around here with county roads and, and they are not maintaining, we had the situation down there near Holly Springs where it was a discussion whether it's the city or the county, the city of the county. Can we get some of this ambiguity out of, of this and get that simply and clear?
I think part of the process is the city saying, these are actually the roads we maintain and then sitting back down with the county and saying, these are the roads that we maintain, these are the questionable areas. These are the questionable areas.
Right.
Let's talk about what we're going to do long-term.
Good.
But we have, we have to at first agree what's ours and what we're maintaining.
Mr. Grant?
First of all, thank you for this information. It's extremely helpful and enlightening. So, one question I just had was, it looks like the city maintained streets are almost a hundred and three miles of that. And then, private streets, a little over nineteen and a half miles. I just wondered if we had any comparison, like that percentage of private streets versus city maintained streets, how we compare to other cities or I would just find that interesting, but?
We don't. I mean, I definitely think that's something we could converse with other cities on. You know, most of the private streets that exist in the city exist because they were developed in neighborhoods as private streets.
Right.
There are a couple of situations where there are properties that have streets that were built where maybe you only have one or two property owners on there and they've never been accepted for public use. But we could definitely look at other communities and try to figure that out.
I think this is really good information. But I guess the question is, what do we do with it? And my suggestion and recommendation has been and continues to be that we need a transportation improvement plan and we need to go out and we need to hire someone that is a professional or specialist in that, a company that, that's what they do, transportation planning. And evaluate our streets and develop some sort of maintenance schedule on them and help us decide how the best way is to catch up and then keep up.
I think what our goal was as a staff was to provide this map to you, provide the data to you, for you to look at it over the next couple of weeks if you have any particular questions. And that hopefully council would adopt this at the next meeting so that we have a formal document that says, these are ours. And whenever there comes up a question from a resident as to whether or not this road, why this road is not being paved, we can quickly look at it and say, hey, that's a private street, you know? Or, hey, that's a street in a development that has not been dedicated to the city. And here are the standards to get it to the city. So, we would want council to take that action. And then, that also gives us the ability to sit down when funds become available from GDOT, for instance, for projects. And we've got this documentation. We can quickly provide the information to GDOT as it relates to getting projects done on those streets.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Rust, go ahead.
Billy, I just had one quick question. Whose job is it within the city to keep track of which streets are ours, theirs, in between?
Well, it's kind of a layered perspective. For instance, as it relates to the maintenance of those streets, that would fall to public works. As it relates to, say, plats that are turned in on development, that would fall to community development. This gives us a good upfront baseline for the city manager to be able to say, those are ours and they're not ours.
To determine that list, you had to go to two or three different places in city of Canton. I mean, you can't, there isn't one person that keeps the book on what's ours.
Well, now, we have, now that we have this data input, our chief information officer over here has the data available through GIS. So, as new developments come in, we would track that information and add it into that, into that guide, basically. It's a public document that can live on the website, citizens can look at, departments can look at and make it more transparent.
Whose job is it, because I'm so familiar with one particular situation, to keep performance bonds, maintenance bonds up to date? Meaning, if you've got a performance bond or a maintenance bond and there's a development, we're getting back into really having some development work done and somebody posts a bond, but that bond has to be renewed every year, two years, whatever. Whose job is it to do that and make sure it's done?
Well, ultimately, the buck stops with the city manager. And so, if they're doing their job correctly, they'll have all that information through the process of community development.
But there's a calendar, somebody keeps a calendar or something, say, boom, you've got to do that.
Should be done through the city manager's office.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Grant?
I believe Mr. Patton had something to add, so?
As council members will recall, I've sort of been involved with all of this at city council direction for about four years now in regards to what is city streets, what is private streets, what's been accepted. Mr. Peppers, along with IT, public works, police, fire, community development, have all been working together in regards to putting all of this information together in map form in a list that gives city council what staff considers to be city maintenance, private streets, those that have not been accepted for city maintenance at this time. We will and we already have in place now mechanism in regards to the bonds in which our office will get an alert two months before a bond is set to expire for us to go out, do an inspection. If that street needs additional work or things of that nature, that gives those people two months to complete that work. If it's not done, then we can extend that bond. If the work is done, if improvements are made, our office will bring through Mr. Peppers to council a resolution to accept streets for city maintenance purposes.
Ken, I just had one more thought. We have a little bit of a checkerboard street issue with some county roads. City, county, city, county, city, county. I drove with a police officer one time and we couldn't keep track of where we were in the county or city. I said, how do you even enforce something? Because you don't know what's what. So, it's nice to have the list, but I think in almost every, in many cases, the streets change ownership in that same street between county and city, perhaps even different city. So, it's a great start, but that's a complication and it's just unique, I think.
And those streets, Mr. Rust, are generally, for the most part, some of our larger arterial and collector roads, which have a combination of city-county properties. That's where the enhanced nine-one-one system and routing through the county E-nine-one-one service comes in handy in regards to who gets routed where. The cities and counties do have intergovernmental agreements in place in regards to response that helps out with some of these situations that you're talking about.
Yeah. Even in some streets, one side is county, the other side is city. So, it's, I drove on one today, twenty, I mean, highway twenty. It's like some city, some county, and it's, the road splits the definition. So, thank you though for the work.
That works for fire, but does that work for police?
The enhanced nine-one-one system is supposed to have a map that pulls up, which is county properties and addresses. And it should route primary. And then, the backup, if you will, is the intergovernmental agreements between police and fire with the county and all of the cities.
That's assuming that when they call, they know what address they are?
That is correct.
Okay.
And at least with fire, we're working through that mutual aid agreement. So, you know?
Sure.
We're not going to deny service because they don't know whether they're in one of those quirky pockets on Marietta Highway, for instance.
My concern was not as much police and fire services as it was maintenance and who owns the street in terms of fixing it and taking care of it and maintaining it.
Well, and what you'll see is us building off this list, the exact, the exact start points and end points. We'll be able to measure the mileage from one start point to an end point to another start point. And I know that the county engineer, Jeff Morton, wants to have a discussion in the coming months with the city about those areas where we do go in and out and what makes sense for us to maintain and what makes sense for them to maintain. Occasionally, we'll work out partnerships together where they take the lead on a project and we just contribute to the project for paving or vice versa. And so, this would give us a mechanism to know which of those we're going to take the lead on versus which of the ones they're going to take the lead on.
We're not going to mow anybody else's grass, so not anymore, just that one GDOT. Thank you, Billy.
Okay. Thank you. The next item, discussion of the hotel motel tax fund budget amendment to allocate funds between city, various component units, and other nonprofit entities to promote tourism.
As you remember, when we set up the city's budget, we put basically all of the hotel motel taxes in contingency at that time so that we could look a little bit closer at it. The city is in a newer paragraph that was created a few years ago. And so, we wanted to make sure that all of those funds that are collected out of the hotel motel tax are spent to the best of their ability to reduce any expenses that might fall to the general fund, so to speak. So, what we have done is we have prepared the budget amendment for you. In years past, we would have paid a debt on the theater through the Downtown Development Authority. That debt was completed prior to the end of the last fiscal year. So, we've removed that for you to see. Additionally, we pay out of the hotel tax for transfers as it relates to the golf course. That's one of the projects that we provide. That actually falls under tourism product development under state law because it's a bricks and mortars-related project for tourism. And then, we have inter-agency allocations. One of the things that I specifically asked for staff to look at were those situations where we were providing funds to, say, Canton Tourism. And then, those funds were going to Canton Tourism and then turned around and provided to other entities that we could give direct allocations to. So, it would cut down on the number of asks and would give Canton Tourism a better feel for the projects that they can work on. So, what you will see in here is funding for the Downtown Development Authority, the Tree City Commission, Canton Tourism, the Arts Council, the Cherokee County Chamber of Commerce, the Historical Society, Main Street. We did keep some funds in here for professional services. If you recall during the budget process, we talked about a campaign for branding and wayfinding signage in the city and signage plans in the city. So, we've allocated a portion of these hotel motel dollars to supplement what would have come from the general fund there. Additionally, we have funds in here for theater operations as it relates to the administrative side of the theater. And so, we've spelled those out specific to the theater in here. So, we would ask the council to consider this at their next meeting.
Okay. And what are any comments? Mr. Rust?
Billy, you brought the theater up. We own the theater, no? We don't, we're not going to make any more payments on the theater, is that correct?
Correct. The facility is paid off.
Did we ever have an allowance in there? I thought there was a budgeted allowance for changes to the marquee, to modernize the marquee.
That was a project that has gone before Canton Tourism for a portion of funds. And they've held off on making a decision on that project until this budget is approved because those funds will fall under this budget.
But it's still on the, on the planning somewhere.
Correct.
Somebody's, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, discussion of the bids and recommendation to award one hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-five, forty-three contract to Barto Paving for milling and paving of Riverbend Way. Peppers?
As we discussed in our special call meeting, the condition of Riverbend Way and the need to make some improvements there before we get into the winter season. We did solicit estimates. We had four estimates that were turned in for the project. The low bidder was Barto Paving. Barto Paving is also doing the city's Lamig projects right now. And we would schedule this alongside those so that we could get this project done before the end of the year.
Okay. Mr. Rust?
Billy, I walked the Riverbend Way with Richard and I think we marked about fifteen to eighteen spots for core samples. Were those, I've been watching, Richard, I don't think those were ever taken yet. Have they been taken? Never? Okay. Is it important for us to have those core samples before we proceed with this? I just add one more thing. I planted a little seed in the quasi-developer who's still got four hundred, five hundred houses to build that I looked at a satellite photo of River Green and there's a spot where we could take and run a second road out the back way and down onto twenty. There's, it's, part of it's already a kind of a construction road already, most of it is, actually. So, and the thought is this, if we do what is not considered to be the permanent fix right now and we get somebody to do a temporary construction road so the bulk of the traffic does not go down Riverbend Way, it's possible we will get more life out of Riverbend Way than we're planning to at this point. So, I'm working on that. It's in planting the seed stage right now. But it's a thought and they thought it might be a good idea to at least look at that because that would certainly take a lot of the wear and tear off Riverbend Way and help us as a city, so?
Well, and as you recall, one of the, one of the big issues that we had with Riverbend Way was the fact that we do have a school that's located on it. We do have a lot of traffic coming into the neighborhood on that, on that particular route. And the understanding that the repairs that we're making, the fix that we're making now is not a permanent fix to the road, but will gain us some life out of the existing road depending on what might happen with construction moving on in the future.
Is the roundabout going to be ground down to the, into the cement to allow a better adhesion by the asphalt? Richard might be able to answer that. Is that, is that part of what we're going to do?
The concrete, the concrete and the, the mill, just the edge of the surface of the roundoff.
Because we, we looked at, because it's unfortunately sliding off the asphalt, the concrete, and there's nothing to hold it there. So, we certainly don't want that same thing to happen again. And I think they're going to put more asphalt down anyway, but you've got to have an adhesion factor there. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to fix that.
And there will be a tack coat that's, that's provided. And we are going to have a public works staff out there the entire time they're working on that project to make sure it's done correctly.
I might take a few walks down there myself.
As we will be doing with all of our paving projects.
Pardon?
We will have public works staff out there for all of our paving projects to make sure they're done correctly on site.
That's great. Okay.
This is, this is an item we talked about, I believe, at our last meeting as well. So, do we need to, we need to move on that based on the timeframe and the, on?
I would encourage you to, yes.
I think it's more because the window is closing. And if we're going to get it done this year, we don't have much time to do that.
Okay.
Correct. That in, that in this particular road will not, will not involve any other curbing or anything like that. It's strictly paving.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Have a motion to approve in a second. Any other discussion? Not those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Oh, the final item, I believe, well, not final item yet, but almost. Discussion of recommendation of the award of the 2015 Lamig Striping to Peak Paving Marking LLC for seventy-two thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for restriping of existing right-of-ways.
Yes. We are trying to finish up our 2015 Lamig projects that are state-funded, portion of state funding. There were a few of those projects that were not completely paving-related. They relate to striping areas and restriping areas. And so, what we have here is we have a quote for seventy-two thousand dollars for that striping. You'll notice that there are roughly nine projects associated with that. Some of these are associated with striping being in currently poor, poor conditions. There are a couple of areas where we're enhancing pedestrian striping that, that needs to be done related to the projects. And so, we would, Mr. Pokes here, he can answer any questions related to this. But we have to have these funds spent before the end of the calendar year. So, we want to make sure that we get them dealt with this month.
I would ask, Richard, why would the striping not be included in with a paving contract included in it? Is there a reason that it?
Now, four of the streets, the striping's included from Barto Paving, Jarvis Street, West Marietta.
The striping was included in that?
Oakdale and Daisy Circle. Those were included from Barto Paving. However, all the other striping is extra striping where we're just... However, all the other striping is extra striping where we're just restriping exist, existing roads.
I got you, I got you, okay.
And we're trying to do all of Marietta Highway and...
Yeah, it's just where it's faded out.
...a considerable amount of striping.
Needs to be redone.
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Mr. Grant?
Yes, I just, we saw the numbers from Peak. I was, did this go out for bid? Did it, did it go out for bid?
It sure did. It went out for bid. We only had one bidder on the project.
Okay.
So it was advertised, what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, Mr. Huffman?
Why do we have painting on some of the streets and thermoplastic on some of the others?
Because the ones that we're doing the painting on, we're getting ready to mill and repave in the future, and the ones that's further out, we're just going to do the thermoplastic. Then after we actually do repave, we'll go with thermoplastic on those.
Mr. Rust?
This doesn't require emergency action, Billy, does it, or doesn't? Is there, is there a window of weather that makes this difficult?
Well, I mean, I would leave that up to you. I think we can get it done if you approve it at the next meeting, you know, but of course, we could always hit a rainy patch and have some troubles, so.
Yeah, what, what, what do you want? Do you want us to do it or not? To say yes or no?
Richard's saying, let's do it, let's do it, let's do it. You know, that, that's up to council. Those are, those are your guidelines.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and, and vote.
We have a motion, a second, but we also, Ms. McGrew, you have some comments?
No, something else.
Oh, on something else? Okay. Any other discussion, then? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Okay, Ms. McGrew, go ahead.
Thank you. Since we're talking about striping, let me just throw this out here. It's been bothering me for three or four years. Let's be in our cars, and we're at the stoplight at Reinhardt College Parkway, coming out of the Sidelines Plaza at the stoplight. We're going to make a left under Reinhardt College Parkway. There's a median there between the lanes. It's raised, it's concrete. At night, it's gray, the sky's gray, the pavement's gray, they're impossible to see. Also, there's one at Reservoir in Reinhardt College Parkway. They're all over the city. And so I, since you were talking about striping, I was wondering, could we get some bright yellow paint on these, just the, the points of these places where you're making a left turn onto that street so you don't hit the curb?
We, we can look at those. We'll also have to look with, with G dot at that as well. That connector is part of, part of G dots, so we'll have to work with them on that. But yes, we can look at it.
Okay. City manager, report, do you have anything else to add?
I do have a couple of things. I wanted to recognize a couple of staff real quick. Camille does a great job for the city, and she just received her certification in social media and marketing. She handles social media for the city, so I wanted to recognize her and congratulate her on that. We also received an individual award for financial reporting achievement for Nathan Ingram from the GFOA group, and also the city received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting as well from that group. I will bring one item to you. We have a request from our police department as it relates to forfeited asset funds. Those are funds that, that they get through a sharing agreement, and currently, we have about twenty thousand, almost twenty thousand dollars in that fund. It can only be used for specific items in the police department. They are requesting the ability to use a portion of that funds to make some upgrades to their office. As you know, it was a post office, it had very few employees. They currently have a lot more employees that are working in there, so they need to make some improvements. We have received a quote for the services, and, and since this runs through that forfeited asset, this is more of an informational item for council, that we'll be doing some work there at the police department with those funds. And then the last thing that I have is related to, to Northside Hospital. As you recall, we have had discussions about the permission that they were given to work outside of hours. They have submitted, or they have submitted their plans for the medical office building on site. Parking facility as well has been submitted, and there was a question among staff as to whether or not, when council approved the ability for the hospital to work outside of hours, was it the desire of council at that, at that meeting that it would apply to those buildings as well or just the hospital project itself? So I wanted to get some guidance from council on that.
Mr. Huffman, did you want to speak to that, or did you want to speak to something else?
I had another comment, not to that.
Okay, I'll, I'll come back to you then, okay? Mr. Rust?
I, I, I'm going to back up one. The police department has twenty thousand dollars in forfeited funds.
Yes.
And they believe, the police department believes, that the best use of their funds is to improve the office, offices.
There are certain things that they can use those funds for, and this is one of the things that they can use it for. It's one of those accounts that grows.
The first, the first two things that jump out at me are bulletproof vests and body cams. Do, are they, are they, are we up? I think my, my, if my information appears correct, one of the funeral homes gave us all body, enough money to do all, all the body bulletproof. So, so that's, that's your, the best use of those twenty thousand dollars is, is the office? Okay. Okay, that's, I just, those are safety things, and they... Okay, thank you, chief, appreciate it.
And this will allow us to not use general funds for that particular project.
Mr. Grant, do you want to comment on this?
Yes, I was just, depending on the clarification from council on, on after-hours work, would we, would developer continue to do the noise reduction items that they've done recently because I think the property owners, we've heard that that really helped, and so I assume they would, would maintain those?
In speaking with the construction foreman and speaking with the hospital, they, they have agreed that their work would continue as, as they has over the last few weeks with the reduction of noise measures that they took, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Huffman?
I, yes. Forgive me, I might be asking a question that was answered when I was absent one of the previous meetings, but to address Chief Mitchell, the new, the new officer that you just hired, it was written up in the paper. Can you, can you give me some clarification? Or was that explained in a previous meeting?
The captain.
The captain's position?
I don't, I don't recall that.
Would you mind telling me a little bit, or the council, a little bit about this new officer that you've got on board? Seemed like a very impressive fellow with a lot of credentials.
Yes, sir, as was approved for, through the budget, was a, for a new captain's position for the agency, and we advertised that through the Georgia Association Chief of Police, and were able to get down to five candidates, and we ended up interviewing three of the candidates. And Mr. Wendell Turner, who's the public safety director, or was a public safety director for the city of Steaksboro, he wants to move away from Steaksboro and, and be up in the, in the metro area because of, or the Cherokee County area because of the, the quality of life, the schools for his kids, and was, was ready to move on after twenty-two years at the Steaksboro Police Department. Throwback ground, very impressive candidate, very good background, and we really believe that his addition to our agency will, will definitely improve the professionalism and services for the police department.
Thanks, chief.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that. To, to go back to the, the question at hand here, we kept jumping around a little bit, but I guess what the question is now, the, the hospital now has like, I believe it said fifty-five acres that's cleared. Is there a limit, or is there a number of buildings that reach a point that is not covered by the permission that was granted for the all-hours work? I guess it was. Or is there, I'm, I'm not sure what the, you know, the line is there, or is it all two hundred acres that they have or three hundred acres, or, or is it confined to just what's been cleared at fifty-five acres? Or is there a smaller area that then would require to come back and, and have another request? Or do they need to come back and have another request? I guess that's the question.
And part of that question stems from the request that was made, which, which called for the hospital, medical office buildings, parking facility, and ancillary structures that are suited on their site plan. And we have a site plan of those actual structures, and that is the more contiguous development of the hospital, not the three hundred-plus acres that they own.
So how many buildings are we talking about?
We're doing the counting in our head real quick.
Mayor, council members, um, select, and there are here six, seven, uh, parcel buildings that includes a loan hospital that are close to one fifty-five acres.
So we're talking about fifty-five acres?
The, the request doesn't include all the things that are planned to be done. When they came and asked, it was limited to those parking deck, medical office building, and hospital, and then some ancillary structures.
Correct.
I'd question what ancillary structures are, but it's mainly what they've asked for. I think at that point, we would be able to say, that's all you've asked for. Is, this would be it, is my point.
What would be it?
Medical office building, parking deck, and hospital. You've already given it...
One medical office building? I mean, I'm...
They wrote a letter, they asked for, they had some things listed. I would say ancillary structures doesn't mean anything. And so they, they've brought permits for medical office building and a parking deck, perhaps, but they listed those things specifically when they asked us before.
Northside's long-range plans were specific, if you will, in regards to Northside themselves building and leasing a space for two medical office buildings, the parking garage, as well as the hospital.
And I don't consider those to be ancillary structures. So whatever they've asked for in that letter is all we'd be giving them without having to come back.
I've not seen the letter, uh...
No, I'm talking about the original letter. When they asked before and we gave them permission, there was a letter that described medical office building, hospital, and parking.
Did it say?
Then it used the phrase ancillary structure. What?
Did it say a medical office building or buildings?
It may have said buildings.
I've not seen that request that was submitted to city council.
Well, there is a point where we can say no. I don't, they don't get to bill for ten years on that permission, is my point.
How this has evolved, at least.
It, it seems like one of the things that we saw today is that the, the definition might be those buildings that are all connected, and every one of those connected buildings probably would be considered part of what they're doing right now. Things that are disconnected in the future may be a different issue.
It would cause them no hardship if we said, no more, you're only going to get what you've actually put out for bid and have a contract on, because that's the only hardship to them, is that somebody quoted it thinking they were going to get to work for certain hours. So perhaps some more conversation with them, but I don't think it's open-ended in it, nor should it be open-ended.
Okay. Anyone else? We got that resolved? I guess we can go to the next one.
That's all that I have.
Okay. Do you have anything else, Ms. Peppers?
No.
Okay. The, the only other item I just want to mention is that we have a couple of vacancies on our Historic Preservation Commission, and I would solicit any recommendation from this council within the next couple of weeks in order to, you know, fulfill that, that full council, full commission. So if you have any ideas or thoughts, I have a couple of names, but, you know, I haven't contacted the people at this point, so who knows? And if you have anyone that you think would be good, just let me know, and we'll certainly check it out and see where we go. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see your light.
Oh, I thought she...
That's all right. Nobody sees my light. It's under a bushel. I wanted to tell the city that the Arts Center is having their fall gala, October seventeenth in Waleska. The Klein House has been remodeled by Phoebe Mays. She bought it, and she's remodeled it. It's that beautiful majestic white house that sits way back across from Reinhardt University. It's a fundraiser for the Arts Center. You can get your tickets at the Arts Center at ninety-four North Street, and I believe it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a couple. Is that correct? Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah. Need to support the arts. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion, say it. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Oh, that's a friend of mine, and those are all ours. I mean, where do you all come?
Northern County.
All of them?
Yeah.
I told him that. But here, I gave it to you because you, you've been working with the county.
Yeah, I sent it to Billy, I mean, not to Billy, but Jerry.
Yeah, we, yeah, we know that, we know that, and they know that, and we just...
Yeah, they just need to do it. I don't know that the path place, even though it's filthy and rundown, it's still off.
No, it isn't.
No, it isn't.